It is a little after 6:30 and the meeting is officially called to order. Lori, can we have the roll?
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Pulis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Greg Strike is excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Commissioner Pulis, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Call for vote. And the minutes are approved. Moving on to our next item on the agenda disclosures. Commissioner Pulis.
Yes, I do have something to disclose. My employer, Lounsmere Associates, is a design consultant on both the Campbell Woods and Spinnard Road projects included in the 2022 CIB and 2227 CIP. I have recently worked on both projects as an engineering consultant.
Given that that is a very small component of a very large capital budget, I would not say it would raise to the level of substantial interest. However, would there be a motion to direct Commissioner Pulis to participate? Motion by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn. Any objection? Seeing no objection, Commissioner Pulis is directed to participate, but thank you for your disclosure. Commissioner Winchester.
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Gardner.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Ron.
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Krishna, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Call for vote. And the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item F5, Municipality of Anchorage Long Range Planning Review and Recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Assembly of the Proposed 2020-2022 Capital Improvement Budget. Ms. Benel, can we have a report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Christine Benel, again, Planning Manager for the Long Range Planning Section in the Planning Department. And with me is Director Lance Wilber from the Public Works Department. So we're here tonight for case number 2021-0131, and again, this is bringing forward the proposed 2022 Capital Improvement Budget and the 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Program. You've just received a short overview on both of these documents, and if you have any other questions, you'll be able to move forward with those in a couple of minutes. So these are routine capital improvement projects, including roads, drainage, and storm drain reconstruction, Anchorage-wide radio infrastructure, a new roof, actually, three new roofs, as we heard about. The Fire Department will replace ambulances and engines. And then the Parks Department has projects too, including improvements to our major trail network. Transit vehicles and support equipment will be upgraded, and there are several public works projects on facilities, roads, and drainage, which we heard about. Many of the projects are located within areas of adopted neighborhood or district plans. This is important to you as a planning and zoning commission, and one of the questions you typically ask each year, how many of these projects are in an area that has a plan? So they're located in Fairview, the UMed District, the downtown, the Ship Creek area, West Anchorage, and along the Spinnard Corridor. Each of these areas has an adopted plan. We did provide you with a draft resolution. You're welcome to talk about what's in that resolution. And I proposed the findings for you based on the fact that some of these projects were, are in approved district or neighborhood plans, and that the projects are equitably, equitably improve safety and quality of life throughout the Anchorage area. The Planning Department does recommend that you approve, that you recommend approval to the Anchorage Assembly. And again, if you have any more questions or comments, you're able, we'll be able to take those now. Thank you.
Thank you. Turning to the Commission, do you have any questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Ron.
Thank you through the chair. Ms. Benel, thank you for the recap, and thank you and Mr. Wilber for leading us through the work session previously. One of your comments towards the end of your recent summary was the statement that has been included as part of our draft findings, and the language is around "equitably improve safety and quality of life." Could you help me understand what parameters by which the administration defines that statement?
Well, I was, the reason that I mentioned quality of life there is quality of life in our neighborhood and district plans is one of the, one of the strategies that we provide different projects for. And so, so like improvements to parks, improvements to, to emergency services and things like that contribute to our overall quality of life. And so that's why that was mentioned. That's not something that came from the mayor's office.
Thank you, Ms. Benel. Apologies if I emphasize the quality of life portion. I was actually more interested in the equitable component.
Oh, the equitable part was because they're throughout the Anchorage area in different parts of town.
Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. I have a comment speaking to the reinvestment focus areas. I think I normally notice because they're outlined on the map that shows the locations of the different projects. And I'll just add a comment here that I was pleased to see the downtown lighting and signals upgrade, the Ship Creek to coastal trail connection, and the Spinnard Road improvements, all included here within the reinvestment focus area boundaries. I think those projects meet the intent of those areas, and I'm happy to see that we're funding investments in the areas that we've agreed upon to invest in as a city.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. Any other members of the Commission wishing to speak? Seeing no members of the Commission in the queue, I'll turn to the Commission to recommend a resolution on this. A proposed resolution has been attached to our packet, which can be used as a starting point. Clarifying with staff, just because I didn't think we opened it up to the public, but is that the case?
It's not a public hearing, yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right, then I will be turning it to the Commission. What is the will of the body? There is a motion by Commissioner Spinelli. Are you making the motion as in our packet?
Yes, I would like to make the motion that we provide the resolution recommending approval to the Anchorage Assembly.
Thank you, Commissioner Spinelli. That is seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Would anyone like to speak to the motion?
I guess I will start off by speaking to the motion that I suggest that we accept the findings provided by staff in the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Spinelli. Seeing no one else in the queue, I guess I'll add as a finding that, in defining equitably, that we're choosing, or I believe we're choosing to define that as geographic distribution as opposed to other measures of equity that some might get confused with. And if it is defined that way, I too agree that these projects are throughout Anchorage municipality as a whole. And I was also heartened to see that there is some development targeted to those reinvestment focus areas as well. Anyone else wishing to make a comment? Commissioner O'Quinn.
Yes, I just wanted to call attention to the fact that, that was brought up in the work session, that the amount of municipal bonds will equal the amount of retired debt service bonds. So I was pleased to see that, that it's not an increase, and then also commend the various departments within the municipality for leveraging local funds to achieve those federal matching dollars.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote. And that motion passes. I would like to give a very big thanks to Ms. Benel and Mr. Wilber for all of their work on this. Your help in the work session was, I would say, beyond measured. It made a very confusing process a lot more simpler, and I also understand that you guys were up against a tight timeline for this, and so the ability of you guys to condense that and give it to us so it did not seem as rushed as it was, was no small feat, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One quick announcement, we are going to publish the update to the downtown plan, and you all got to fly her. And so I will look forward, you'll be seeing me again on that, and so I appreciate your time tonight, and I will amend the resolution for you with the additional findings, and you'll see that on November 1st for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our next item on the agenda, case 2021-0012. Before I turn to the staff for the report, I'm going to go ahead and cover our procedure for the Planning and Zoning Commission. The procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission at its meetings is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established by the Commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttals. Representative groups such as community councils, PTAs will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for Commission recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the Commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Staff, can we have a report?
Thank you, Chair Bailey. Assemblymember John Weddleton presented Assembly Ordinance 2021-71, Attachment 1, to amend Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Section 2108, O5OG, Curbs and Gutters, to allow rolled curb and gutter on residential minor streets. The municipal Anchorage standard specifications and design criteria manual define barrier curbs and gutters type 1, and rolled curb and gutter is type 2. Cross-sections and specifications are included in Attachment 2. Henceforth, type 1 will be referred to as vertical curb, and type 2 will be referred to as rolled curb. The justification of this code amendment, as stated in the AO, is to decrease the cost of new development and new dwelling units by removing the code requirement to provide vertical curb. In the circumstance that a developer does not know the final location of a driveway, curbs are required to be installed prior to the final location, which may result in increased fees and construction time. This increased construction cost may be avoided in some situations if rolled curb is used. The intent of this amendment is to allow the use of rolled curb only in Class A subdivisions with low traffic areas determined by the traffic engineer. Examples include cul-de-sacs where there's a vegetated buffer between the curb and sidewalk, on streets with no parking signage, and short areas where standard vertical curb would not be effective in preventing drivers from parking on the sidewalk. The Plating Board has approved a recommendation of this ordinance last week. The Planning Department has taken into account department recommendations and recommends approval of the text amendment to Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Section 2108, O5OG, Curbs and Gutters, to allow rolled curb on residential minor streets, subject to the conditions 1 through 4 on page 2 of this report. To clarify, recommendation number 2 would be to add a four-foot minimum buffer between the road and the sidewalk in areas where the developer chooses to use rolled curb rather than vertical curb. Thank you. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Ron.
Thank you through the chair, Ms. Gettig. Apologies, how do you pronounce your last name?
That's correct, Gettig.
All right. Ms. Gettig, on page 5 of the staff packet, I'm reading the front page of Assemblymember Weddleton's AO language, and lines 37 through oh about 40 talk about the intent is that a policy will be created to accompany this. Has that policy been created or to be created still?
Thank you. Through the chair, that policy has not yet been created, but the Traffic Engineering Department did provide us with recommendations for the 1 through 4 to give a little bit more clarity to, to kind of substitute until that policy is created, if it, if it will be created.
Commissioner Pulis.
Yeah, my question pertains to the four feet. Is it strictly, you know, the separation between the sidewalk and back of curb? Is that strictly based on traffic's recommendation, or was there a bigger overall discussion about that, do you know? Because some people recommended 3, some just said a separation, the ultimate decision was 4. Do you know the purpose that came from?
Thank you. Through the chair, the four feet was decided, it was recommended by the Private Development Department because four feet is their standard separation, and I know that that four feet is the minimum that allows for the standard equipment to mow the grass that's usually put in between the back of curb and the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I guess first, turning to the four feet. So my initial question was to make sure I understand kind of what that looks like, but is what's contemplated there? You've got the curb, and then you've got a strip of grass, and then the sidewalk?
That is correct.
Okay. Does that, I guess one question that occurs to me about that is, does that interfere with the intent of this in that, in that if you're kind of, if you don't know where the driveway is yet, but you're needing to kind of build in this strip of grass, do you need to, like, how does that process look like?
Thank you. Through the chair, if you look at page 11 of your staff packet, it has the the cross-sections of type 1 versus type 2, that vertical versus rolled, and so that standard, I believe, is where the cost is incurred through construction of having to do those curb cuts. Where the four feet is put in place, I don't think that it affects the grade of the curb and gutter quite as much.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess maybe a related question. I saw that there was a comment from, I guess on page 26, that speaks to the thickness required for the driveway access, and suggesting that that might be a change that would need to be implemented once the final driveway location is determined, and I didn't see anything otherwise discussing that issue, and I was wondering if you understood exactly what that's referring to and the Planning Department's interpretation of that comment?
Thank you. Through the chair, unfortunately, we don't have a representative from the Right of Way Division here to speak to that, but I believe their comment is that the rolled curb would still have the six-inch thickness that would still require a curb cut, but that is, in contrast to the vertical curb that has a 12-inch thickness that would need that curb cut.
Okay, thank you. And then, sorry, I'll just kind of, one more question, then I'll try and get through here quickly. With respect to the suggested changes in the recommendation, and I do, for myself, I appreciate the effort to provide some objectivity there in number 2. And I'm wondering if that affects kind of how some of the exceptions work with each other. And maybe, I guess, maybe the best way for me to give my question is to just explain my interpretation of what the, what the outcome will be and see if I'm reading it correctly. So we would be adding language that says for residential minor streets, curbs may be of the roll curb variety, although we'll describe that differently. And then say when the traffic engine, or rather, when sidewalks will be separated from the curb by a minimum of four feet. And then we have an exception that says curb and gutter within the arc of a residential scale, cul-de-sacs shall be of the roll curb variety, and so is that different from what's above in that the cul-de-sacs are required to have a roll curb, whereas in other, in other residential minor streets, it's optional?
Thank you. Through the chair, I believe that that would be up to the determination of the traffic engineer. But the, the four feet comes to specify the original language that states where there is a vegetated buffer. So it's adding clarity to define what that quantity of vegetated buffer is, is four feet. So I believe that it's an either-or option of either in a cul-de-sac or on a straight portion of right of way where there is a four-foot vegetated buffer. But I believe that would be up to the traffic engineer.
Okay, so just, sorry, just to make sure, again, I'm confirming I'm reading this correctly. So the exception 1, so I guess as an initial question, the cul-de-sac is a residential minor street? Yeah, well, okay, maybe I'm, I guess I'm just wondering if the first exception is still needed or not, or if it's just redundant, or if the first exception is there because it's saying it's required in cul-de-sacs.
Can I ask for clarification? Are you referring to the recommendation number 1 on page 2?
Sorry, apologies. I'm looking on page 8. So I guess the question, so that exception that allows it in cul-de-sacs, if that, if it's already allowed in the previous language, and if that's needed still? Or if it's doing some additional work? Okay, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tap out for a second. I'll let someone else ask some questions, and I'll, I'll continue reviewing. Thank you.
Commissioner Spinelli, since this is your area of expertise, let's go to you.
My question has already been answered. But if you were to build a neighborhood and continue to use type 1 curb, you would probably still want to use rolled curb within the cul-de-sac. So that might be why the exception is still there. But previously, I think the exception was there because even if you did do type 1 curb, they, you were still allowed to use rolled curb within the cul-de-sac. Just because the lots are smaller and there's no room to cut in for driveways.
And Commissioner Spinelli, did you have any questions, or you just want to fill in with that comment?
No, my, my question was answered already, so I was, yeah, I'm tap-
All right. I'm gonna ask a question. How do I get in the queue, or do I just? I just pretend that I'm in the queue somewhere? All right, I'll try not to abuse my power of pretending where I am in the queue, so I'll go to Commissioner O'Quinn.
So through the chair, I see that the four conditions address a lot of the public comments, but there was a comment about the fact that in roll curb environments, often folks will just kind of off-permit go in and widen their driveways, you know, they get a new boat, they get a new motorhome, whatever, and they just want to, they need more space for their teenager's car, whatever. And I don't see any recommendation in here that would address that. I understand the four-foot buffer would help keep the traffic and the pedestrians separated, but I don't see anything, I don't see that we're going to be out there enforcing, you know, the code anymore if we allow this. So I'd like to see some kind of mechanism to control that. Did you guys consider that at all?
Thank you. Through the chair, new driveways or expansion of driveways does require a driveway permit. So unfortunately, that's a tool that we have to use, is to get a driveway permit. If folks are widening them without approval, that would be a code enforcement issue. But we don't have anything new that we're adding right now. Thank you.
So just to go on the record, as far as my opinion is, you know, I think that that, that is actually a legitimate problem. It is in my neighborhood anyway. People put down gravel or even pavement, you know, widen their driveways beyond the permitted width all the time, and this would encourage that, I think.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you through the chair, Ms. Gettig. I'm interested in the summary of economic effects, C as it's acronymed. It's briefly described on page 6 of the staff packet, and I'm led to believe based on that language that a C was completed by the Planning Department. And it was determined that proposed ordinance does not have significant economic effects. I also understand that the justification of the code amendment is to decrease the cost of new subdivisions, so it's a cost-based driver. While I appreciate the qualitative "does not have significant economic effects," can you help me better understand who benefits from and who may be burdened by the cost drivers that are pushing this forward?
Thank you. Through the chair, the Planning Department has not prepared a summary of economic effects. Before it goes to the Assembly, we can, we can do that. This AO came through Assemblymember John Weddleton, whose memo states that this proposed ordinance does not have significant economic effects, but the, the AO does state that this will reduce fees for developers, and therefore reducing the cost of homeownership for those who would be in these new subdivisions.
If I can follow up on your response there, Ms. Gettig, I just want to ensure that that in fact is the department's position, that the homeowner will benefit from the passage of this resolution. And therein I would test the department to make sure they have the data to support that conclusion.
Yeah, I thought I'd just shed some light on a couple of questions that Gardner asked over there. So the six-inch thickness, I think they're talking about the sidewalk, not the height of the curb. So if you have a street and you've got a four-foot separation to a sidewalk, you've got to pull the four-inch sidewalk that was already installed and put in six-inch-thick sidewalk, because it's in a driveway. That's what right-of-way is referring to in their comment. So the costs are actually like, you know, removing the length of curb, then removing the length of the sidewalk, you know, if a developer went in and put the sidewalk in and was required to, then yeah, you're supposed to, by that detail, replace the sidewalk also to be six-inch instead of four-inch-thick curb. So the costs are the asphalt against the curb and gutter, the curb and gutter itself, and the sidewalk for a homeowner to pick where their driveway goes. So if somebody goes in, builds a cul-de-sac, has no sidewalk, the only thing that's costing them is that length of curb, but if you add the sidewalk, then they have to replace the sidewalk also at every driveway. And it is hard to pick where the driveways are for a subdivision developer, because they're just building the roads and the improvements, but if you have a house, you know, that has a driveway on the right side, but on the other side it's on the left side, that driveway moves, and so it's usually on the homeowner to pick where their driveway goes based on what plan, and then they gotta basically cut through the improvements that were already done to tap in. Does that clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
Ms. Gettig.
Thank you, Chair Bailey. I did just want to second what Commissioner Spinelli referenced in that curb exception for the cul-de-sac. He already answered the question, though. Thank you.
I think I'm gonna jump in the queue now. My question goes to, what happens if there is not a sidewalk in these areas? Does that mean that no rolled curb is allowed, or is there a different interpretation?
Thank you, Chair Bailey. I believe in these Class A road districts, sidewalk would be required, since in a residential area, new developments require those sidewalks, so I think in circumstances where sidewalk would not be required, might not be in that Class A minor residential area, so I don't think that this would be applicable.
And just as a follow-up question, wanted to make sure that covering all the bases, it would be required on both sides of the street in all scenarios in those areas?
Thank you, Chair Bailey. I believe in these Class A residential districts, sidewalks would be required on both sides of the street.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. My question is, if you could provide a little bit more information on what constitutes a residential minor street? I ask that because a number of the public comments we received were worried perhaps that this proposed amendment would be implemented on, say, their street in South Edition or another residential street. Could you tell us a little bit about what types of streets, or how many areas and anchorage this would be eligible to be used in?
Thank you. Through the chair, AMC Title 21-08-05-0D Interior Streets, that's gonna be on page, starts on page 17 of Chapter 8 of your Title 21 books, has a table, classifies what type of residential streets are what. So the ADT for residential minor is 0 to 75, and so that is a, it's a pretty low-volume residential street, where you see cul-de-sacs in low volume in and out, and so I can't tell you what number of streets that applies to, but those are gonna be in the Class A districts, so R1 through R6 zoning districts, and with those 0 to 75 ADT, that typically have a cul-de-sac.
I forgot I had one other question that didn't get answered. Did the Plating Board approve these exact recommendations that we have in front of us? Is that what the Plating Board approved?
Thank you, Commissioner Spinelli. Through the chair, yes, the Plating Board is recommending approval as is, with those conditions, or recommendations 1 through 4.
Okay, that's, this is what I was curious.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes, thank you. I have one additional question, I think this one should be a little more straightforward to ask and to answer. Looking at page 6 in the memo here, this is part of the memo, I guess it's called, from Assemblymember Weddleton, and it references that vertical curbs would be required along safe routes to schools within 1.5 miles from public schools where there's no bus pickup. My question is, is that in fact the case, and if so, what is kind of the source of that, since it's not specifically referenced in, in the amendments we're looking at here?
Thank you. Through the chair, we did not include that vertical curbs required on safe routes to schools, because we do not have a set boundary of where those are, and we don't really have anything to quantify what those routes are, and so it's not something that's currently codified, so we did not include that in our text amendment.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
So I just want to echo some of Commissioner Ron's questions about the actual benefits to the developer, just hearing what Commissioner Polis said about having to pull up the sidewalk and repour, you know, six inches of concrete there, I don't really see, seems kind of like a wash to me, so, I mean, I need some, I need, you know, before to recommend this to the assembly, especially seeing all the comments in opposition to it, I'd really like to see some more factual basis for the cost savings. I'm not saying they're not there, but I'm not seeing it.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Gettig, my apologies if I missed it during your initial presentation. Oftentimes, we hear from staff about the number of public comments received and a summary of opposition or in favor. Just want to make sure that we do have for the record, given that multiple commissioners have talked to the public comments received and included in our staff packet, would you be able to provide a summary of that just briefly? By my count, it looks like about 13 public comments received, and a lot of them in opposition.
Yeah, thank you. Starting on page 13 in Attachment 3, we have our reviewing agency and public comments. All of the comments that we received from our reviewing agencies were no opposition, some of them with recommended changes, such as the ones implemented by the Traffic Engineering Department and private development. There are comments from the community that start on page 17 of your packet, and they do tend to be not in support of the rolled curb change to preserve their sidewalks for pedestrians, rather than vehicles parking on the sidewalks, and our hope is that that four-foot separation between the road and the sidewalk will prohibit drivers from taking the liberty of parking, not only on the grass that would separate the sidewalk, but then going into the sidewalk.
I actually kind of looked into some of the costs today on the Muni bid tabs, which are basically average tabs of contractors' bids on sidewalk and curb, because I'm a nerdy civil engineer, and this one interests me, but it looked like the difference between six-inch and four-inch-thick sidewalk was about 20 bucks a square yard, and the difference between a type 1 and a type 2 curb was about 15 bucks a linear foot. So the sidewalk seems like a bigger cost than the curb did to me. It's just a data point that I could find.
Thank you, Commissioner Polis. I always appreciate nerdiness in all forms. I had a question for Ms. Gettig. I didn't notice any public comments from community councils. I was wondering, was this given to the Federation of Community Councils, given it was municipality-wide impact, and were community councils given enough time to respond?
Thank you, Chair Bailey. This was sent to every individual community council within the municipality, as well as SERAB, which is the, one of the road boards, and I can tell you what date those notices were sent out in just a moment.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, was it given to any representatives from Vision Zero as well?
Thank you. I don't have anything indicating that it was given to Vision Zero. It is posted at least 21 days before the meetings, and just typical policy, we normally send these out to community councils about six weeks before the public hearings. And to provide clarification, this was sent out to the community councils on August 16th.
Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, I will open it up to public comments. If anyone here would like to speak at this time, please come up to the podium, state your name for the record, and let us know if you are representing yourself or an organization. There's a little yellow dot there, and you'll, the microphone, there you go.
There we go, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is River Ramuglia. I represent myself as an individual. I just want to say that this process is unbelievably opaque to me. I have no idea what's going on. I would like to learn how to know more about it. I, that's all I really have to say, it's just sort of difficult to understand what's going on in these meetings without, without inside knowledge, so.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Are you asking specifically with regards to this agenda item, or are you asking in regards to the meeting as a whole?
The meeting as a whole. Honestly, it just feels like people are saying one thing, and they're reading other things on their screens, and it's, it's difficult to understand what's going on, so I don't know how a member of the public can have meaningful participation in this process.
No, thank you for the comment. I would say that I tend to think that we, as a city, can do more to make stuff more available and more open to the public. I will say that these, the packets that we read from are public, and you can get online, and that's what we tend to base all of our discussion on, and so for future meetings, my advice is pull information there, and I will also add that I have found our staff to be more than accommodating, and they will bend over backwards trying to explain things, so I hope that helps in the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
And also, can I, can you spell your last name for the record?
Sure, it's Ramuglia, R-A-M-U-G-L-I-A.
Thank you, and I really appreciate you coming, particularly when you don't necessarily have something in mind, but you're just looking to be more involved, and I would say again, if you're not involved in this already, I'd really urge you to be involved in your community council, just because that's when they kind of rise through the ranks, and so you could start to track things as they come to us and then advance to the assembly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. And just since we have another member of the public here, were you wishing to speak? It's not required, but, okay. Commissioner Spinelli.
I was gonna ask him what kind of curbs he preferred.
If you want to come back up, we do have a question for you.
So, the ordinance before us is debating whether or not to provide straight curbs in residential neighborhoods, or allow type 2 rolled curbs, and I was just curious if you had a preference on that.
No, I don't. I think whatever you decide should be just fine.
Okay. Since you were here, I thought we should ask.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public calling in, or is, all right, then public testimony on this item is closed. Turning back to the commission, do you have any additional questions for staff, or would like to make a motion at this time? Commissioner O'Quinn.
In the case of 2021, in the, in case 2021-0112, I recommend that, recommend to the approval of the text amendments to the Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Section 21-08-05-0G, Curbs and Gutters, to allow rolled curb on residential minor streets, subject to conditions 1 through 4, and be shown on page 2 of the staff report.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner O'Quinn, appreciate you putting the motion on the floor, I wasn't quite quick enough to do so myself. Also appreciate the breadth of questions we had by all members of the commission, seemed like we were very engaged in this one, presuming that, you know, we are all Anchorage residents, and most of us probably have a curb in front of our place of residence as well. As such, I happen to live in front of a rolled curb on the south side of my street, that's what we have is rolled curbs, immediately a budding sidewalk, which during the summertime is a challenge, during the wintertime, when there is very little segregation and separation between what appears to be the driven roadway surface and that rolled curb and onto the sidewalk, it's just an expansion of the traveled way through, through the neighborhood, so that's something that I have personal experience with. And it leaves me a little envious of the north side of the street that I live on, further down the block, they have vertical curb, and don't, don't, don't face those challenges. I don't intend to support this motion. October is pedestrian safety awareness month nationwide. We didn't have a lot of discussion about that with staff, about the safety aspects. That said, for the record, the AO itself, as written by Assemblymember Weddleton, spoke to the trade-off, and one of those trade-offs is a potential decrease in safety through this design change. We talked about the public comments, huge preponderance of them in opposition, all or predominantly on the basis of walkable neighborhoods. For those reasons, I don't intend to support the motion, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ron. Commissioner O'Quinn.
I also do not intend to support the motion. Similarly to Commissioner Ron, I have rolled curb in front of my house with no separation, albeit, but it just creates a lot of problems, and I really didn't see any cost-saving basis, especially after Commissioner Polis has cited, you know, costs that were material to a developer, and, you know, certainly not a well, you know, studied cost analysis that I would expect to accompany something like this, so I do not intend to support this.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. I, I guess I intend to not support the motion as well, largely for similar reasons, I just wanted to make a few more specific findings, and that's, in part, for these text amendments, you know, typically we have pretty clear criteria that we're looking at. I think in my mind, these are a little more challenging and, and difficult to determine exactly how to think about them, but I know that what we're providing here is just a recommendation to the assembly, and ultimately, the assembly's approval criteria will include, among other things, a requirement that the proposed amendment be necessary or desirable because of changing conditions, new planning concepts, or other social or economic conditions, and the memo from Assemblymember Weddleton did refer to an effort to reduce costs in the development of new subdivisions, and from what we saw today, and the- And from what we saw today in the packet and otherwise heard from the public, I, I just didn't, I didn't see that that, that goal was kind of satisfied here. And on the other side of ledger, there clearly are concerns in, in the quality of life with having a rolled curb versus a vertical curb. So I'm not opposed to the idea, I guess, in, in general, that this amendment, or that this text amendment was trying to accomplish, but I just, I didn't see anything kind of supporting it when compared with the downsides of it.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes. I intend to support the motion, and I'd like to speak to a little bit, a couple of things. First, I would like to say that in 2014, I was one of the only residential developers to build the first neighborhood that had Type 1 curb required. Since then, and it was, it was exponentially more expensive, more expensive to design and install because of the numerous number of transitions, and this happened to be a small lot subdivision. These are 7,000-square-foot, 60-foot-wide lots. One of the things, we, we did have to pick out our driveways in advance, and turns out some of them were not in the correct place, so we have moved them. But one of the things that, you know, sticks out to me as, and it's obviously stuck out to the Plating Board too, because this is the only residential subdivision that I know of, that the Plating Board didn't approve a variance overturning this code on since then, was that on a 50-foot-wide lot, what you end up with is a 20-foot-wide driveway or 24-foot-wide driveway, however wide it is, and then you end up with a small curb that transitions up to the six inches, and it usually is running like eight or 10 feet. So in between, on a 50-foot-wide lot, you might end up with a nine-foot or 10-foot section of actual Type 1 barrier curb, and then it just starts transitioning down again. And at the Plating Board, at some of the variances that have gone through, I've kind of brought pictures, and I've made kind of funny comments about, like, I'm a skateboarder, so I like curbs that go up and down, but if this is all about public safety, like, these don't even meet ADA standards because they're ramping up and down for these driveways. And this is in a small subdivision where the sidewalk is against the curb. So the Type 2 curb is what has been installed throughout the municipality, and I just think that, and I think the, the staff has kind of agreed, which is why they supported this, that it's just, nobody's figured out a better option to how to do Type 1 curb. And I don't think anybody disagrees that Type 1 does have a time and a place, but in the residential developments that we're seeing go forward nowadays, it, it's been overturned on every, like I said, I'm the only subdivision developer to have built one since 2014, when this went through, so. And so everyone goes through a variance, and the variance is an extra fee for application, and then it's an extra step in the Plating Board process. So it adds time and money to the process, and, I mean, and I can attest that it is more expensive to design and install, and I don't think that engineer's time to design all those transitions is accounted for in Mr. Paulus's muni bid tab. But that's all I had.
This one was a tough one for me, because I feel like, given more information, I really could have decided one way or another, but ultimately, where I think I have to come today is that I wasn't given that much information. I wasn't given a good cost-benefit analysis on what costs this actually causes to developers. I wasn't given a good cost of how have other cities looked at the impacts on residential traffic and pedestrian traffic. I think it's also tough, because a lot of people are comparing a traditional rolled curb with a sidewalk directly abutting it, and trying to compare that to a rolled curb with four feet of grass and then a sidewalk, and it's not really comparing apples to apples anymore. All that being said, I think I'm left with not having enough information to be able to determine that the municipality has shown that there is sufficient change in economic conditions, because we haven't been presented with that information. So that's why I'm leaning towards voting no at this time, but I believe that there is something to this, this case and the reason it was brought forth. I think it's just unfortunate it wasn't completely flushed out. Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up to add a finding as well that's similar along the lines of the Chair's comments, and that's, again, to reiterate that my understanding is that what we're providing is a recommendation, and I understand that the Assembly may have additional information available to it on the specific cost question, and that specifically, in my mind, what's relevant here is the, the email and comment from the Right-of-Way section on page 26 of our packets with respect to the thickness of the sidewalk, and it's, there's just, there's no way to understand how that cost compares with the cost of the curb in the materials that were provided, and that, that issue that was identified by the Right-of-Way section is not otherwise kind of addressed or resolved for us.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes. I just had a procedural question. If we wanted to, since there's a motion on the floor, do we have to vote on it, or can I withdraw my motion and myself or someone else make another motion to table this for another time for more information from the applicant?
I think there are, I think that is an option. I also think it's an option that we give our recommendation to the Assembly, and it's their motion, and they can take our findings. So I do think there's two ways. If we want the staff to come back with more information and flush it out, that's something. But yeah, I would say both of those are options. However, I'd say you don't need to withdraw your motion for either of those options, if my interpretation of Robert Rules is correct. I'm going to turn to staff and say, do you know if there is a timeline for this text change, that it needs to be to the Assembly by a certain time period? Is, if we were to table it and have staff go back for more information, do you have enough feedback from us at this meeting that you can do that and come to us? Sorry, that's kind of a compound question, but...
Thank you, Chair Bailey. We understand your questions and concerns and can certainly do a better job at addressing some of those. This did come through Assemblymember John Weddleton, and so I don't believe that they are in a big-time crunch. I would assume, since we're heading into the winter, no sidewalks are being constructed right now. However, we do have to consider that some of these developers might be in their design phase, so I am not sure if there is a distinct timeline that they are trying to reach.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would just like to follow up on comments by, by you and Commissioner Spinelli. With respect to the visual interpretation and fixation on rolled curb immediately adjacent to sidewalk, perhaps that's a fault of the photos given to us in the staff packet on page 6. I'll go back to Commissioner Gardner's repeated questions to seek clarification on both the exceptions and the application of when, where, and how the changes could be constructed in a residential setting. With respect to the four-foot separation, while I would agree that there may be some mitigation there, having a grassy area, that grassy area only exists for six to seven months a year. We do live in a northern latitude, we are a snow city, and that mitigation doesn't exist equally year-round. Commissioner Spinelli, thank you for pointing out that there is a variance process, a way in which, when and where it makes sense, developers can move forward with rolled curbs in their subdivisions, if I understood your comments correctly. And that gives me more confidence in not approving this motion at this time.
Ms. Gettig?
Thank you. Through the Chair, I just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Ron that the images on page 5 and 6 of your packet, specifically the cross-sections, are not specific to the municipality of Anchorage. And so on page 11, we have the actual design criteria manual and standard specifications. Just to provide clarification, that those earlier cross-sections are not exact for what would be required.
Our current motion is still on the floor. I would just add, whether we choose to table this or whether we send it to the Assembly as-is, I think the variance process is very much the reason why this should be looked at. If it is as Spinelli, Commissioner Spinelli says that there are not vertical curbs being installed, because they're always going through variances, it's showing that what we're desiring isn't working. And it's also showing that in order for people to build their subdivision, they're just spending more time and more money going through a variance process. I would rather us create something that makes building simpler while also making sure that we have safe streets. Again, I don't feel we have enough information for me to know whether rolled curbs would do this, so I'm still planning on voting no. But I do want to commend Assemblymember Weddleton, because I think he is addressing an issue that needs to be looked at, and there are ways to simplify the process and make a safer street based on what designers are going to be doing in the long run. Commissioner Paulus?
I just wanted to do a, excuse me, follow up Spinelli's comment in that he's right. You have a 24-foot driveway, it takes at least another 20 feet to match on a Type 1 back-up curb. There's definite savings in not replacing the curb. They're still going to have to replace the sidewalk, no matter what, like Right-of-Way pointed out. That being said, I just, I feel like I'm pretty much on the fence. The one thing I keep coming back to now is, I have also lived on a, on a street with rolled curb, and everyone did park on the sidewalk, and my kids drove their bike out in the middle of the street to go around cars, and that's one of the things I end up falling on. The four feet does a lot for that. Probably be a little bit more, and you definitely wouldn't have anyone on sidewalks, but, you know, I'm, I'm pretty much on the fence. It's, there are definite cost savings there, but I'm not sure the safety offset is there either. So I intend not to support.
All right. We still have our motion on the floor, so it will be going as so moved, and seeing no one else in the queue, let's go ahead and call for a vote. And that motion does not pass. I want to thank staff for their preparation of this packet. I think if it ends up going further along to the Assembly, we've provided a lot of comments and feedback. And again, want to thank Assemblymember Weddleton for spotting this issue. I just don't think we're quite there yet. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, we'll be clearing off our screen so people can raise to move to adjourn. And there's a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Paulus and a second by Commissioner Gardner. Seeing no objections, we are adjourned.